I'd like to call the meeting to order. Agenda for Craven County Board of Commissioners' regular session, Tuesday, September the 5th, at 7:00 P.M. Will you please stand for the place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, I pray tonight to be willing to see the big picture in all things, act in accordance with my best and most ethical self, and grant the benefits of doubt to those I serve. Thank you, Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call. Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Lainer?
Here.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Commissioner Sampson?
Here.
Commissioner Tyson?
Here.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Here.
Chairman Mark?
Here. I'd like to take a few minutes for Chairman's privilege. We have a member amongst the commissioners who has served for many years. In fact, I think I'd let him tell you the number of years, but it's past 20. And he was presented with an award, or he should have been presented with an award, but he was not able to make this meeting in Winston-Salem. So Commissioner Sampson, I'd like you to stand up and accept this longtime county service award as to a commissioner, as county commissioner, for the past 20 years awarded by Johnny Sampson, Board of Commissioners, Craven County, 2017. Congratulations.
I'd just like to say I'm grateful for this award, that I was able to serve the community in this capacity for the last 21 years. I'm thankful for my wife, who worked hard with me a lot of times. She actually wants to control me, but I'm the boss. I love this kind of for my heart. I've been here all my life, and I enjoy being here. Don't want to go anywhere else but here. That's why I work so hard to make this one the best county, is in the whole 100 counties. And not only the 100 counties, but all over the United States and where. Thank you very much.
If you would please put all your phones on silent ring, or any other apparatus you might have with you. There's been a number of things that have been put on the dais here, resolutions and whatever. It is not allowable to give these to the commissioners. They're supposed to go to the county clerk whenever you get up to speak, as she makes a recording of these memos or resolutions that you have given. So anybody that's put it up here, you can take them later on, or give them to the county clerk. Thank you. All right. You've had the agenda looked over. Are there any additions or recommendations other than what the agenda showed?
Move to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to have a motion to go into public hearing for the commission to close Bowie Street.
So moved.
Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Bungard?
Yes, sir. This hearing, the purpose of the hearing tonight is to receive some input regarding the proposed closure for a portion of Bowie Street, which is an unopened, public right-of-way in Township 7 extending from U.S. Highway 70 to the property owned by the North Carolina Railroad. Ginman Property Management is the current owner of the property along this portion of Bowie Street to be closed, and he has petitioned Craven County to consider the closure of this portion, which is located in the Jame City area. Per North Carolina general statutes, a public hearing must be held to approve or deny such request. Once the public hearing is closed, in order to move forward with the closure, the commissioners must adopt an order of closure. We've worked very closely with the county attorney on this. This was a little different than previous road closures that we've had, based on the number of public notices required and the process of adopting a proposal to close a portion of road. And then, once you hold the public hearing, then you would have to adopt this order of closure. We have heard from no one concerning any opposition to this, but again, you are required by law to hold this public hearing.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience? Do we have anything?
As a matter of fact, Mr. Chairman, we do. Mr. Mark General.
I want to thank the commissioners for taking their time tonight to hear this. I represent Ginman Property and the closure for that street. So if there are any questions, we plan on developing our Kia dealership there, is our purpose, to close this street. So that property that we obtained on the other side of Bowie Street will help us mitigate some wetland issues, as well as a retention pond, in order to incorporate it in this piece of property. So any other questions you might have, I'd be happy to answer.
No questions? Thank you.
Thanks again, gentlemen.
Move to close the public hearing?
So moved, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Go on to public hearing.
Don, we got it.
Yeah, you would need to, if you were going to move forward to allow this closure, you would need to adopt the order of closure.
Move to adopt the order of closure.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have the Craven Area Rural Transit System public hearing?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Federal Transit Administration, or FTA, requires that all direct and primary recipients document their compliance with Department of Transportation Title VI regulations by submitting a Title VI program to their FTA regional civil rights officer once every three years, as otherwise directed. Craven County is a direct recipient of FTA funds. The Title VI Program Concurrent Letter from the FTA, which was dated December 19th, 2014, requires that CART submit an updated plan by October 1st of 2017. The current Title VI program and the current Limited English Proficiency, or LEP, policy and plan were originally approved by the Board of Commissioners in October of 2014. There are no fundamental changes to the Title VI program or the LEP policy and plan. Information reflecting tonight's public hearing and updating and some wording is being requested, but no changes to the policy or plans themselves are being asked. As part of the meeting, the requirement of reviewing and updating the plan every three years, CART solicited input regarding these plans from the Transportation Advisory Board, community agencies, and the public via email and by holding one public meeting on August 18th. And then, the public hearing tonight is required. The proposed programs have been available to be reviewed by the public since August 25th of 2017 on the Craven County website and at the CART's office. And there was a public hearing notice placed in the local newspaper.
Okay. We have a motion to the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. All right, we're now in public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, nobody has signed up to participate in the public hearing segment of today's.
Is there anybody that wishes to speak on it? Any of you?
Motion to go out of the public hearing.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Could we ask approval to?
Right. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chairman, are we going to have any discussion? Has this, these funds have already been approved by Congressman Jones and our Congress? Is that right?
Right. These are the urbanized formula funds that we received. We call 5307.
They come from the federal government?
And they come from, right, right. So this isn't asking for any money. This is just meeting the requirements as being a direct recipient of that money.
So if someone had questions or comments on it, they should contact Congressman Jones or Congressman Butterfield if they were in a certain part of the district.
In regards to the funding?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Do we have a motion? Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Next is petition of citizens.
Mr. Chairman, we have a group of eight individuals this evening. So Pat Shelko?
Yes.
Hello there.
Hi.
Give four minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm happy to be here tonight to advocate for the Equal Rights Amendment again, and to celebrate that the Equal Rights Amendment is still live and kicking. The Equal Rights Amendment states equality of rights under the law shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sex. And sex discrimination continues to limit equal opportunity and justice for women. And the U.S. Constitution does not protect women from sex discrimination, except for the right to vote. Women and their children are the vast majority of persons in poverty in the U.S. And despite laws guaranteeing equal pay for equal work, women on average are paid only 78 cents on the dollar that men are paid. The job categories and contributions of women are undervalued compared with those of men. Without a foundation of economic equality, women will never be equal. Lawmakers and judges must be encouraged to include equitable consideration of female experiences as they deal with the issues of Social Security, taxes, wages, pensions, domestic relations, insurance, violence, and more. Without an Equal Rights Amendment providing motivation, the status quo will change much more slowly. The ERA was approved by the House of Representatives in 1971 and the Senate in 1972. In 1982, the ERA fell three states short of ratification within the time deadline set by Congress. However, in 1992, a major development occurred that resurrected the ERA. That year, the Madison Amendment concerning congressional pay raises won ratification after 203 years. The Twenty-Seventh Amendment's incorporation into the Constitution after such a long delay signals the continuing viability of the ERA, especially since mention of a deadline is not included in the text of the ERA amendment. In March of this year, the courageous state of Nevada became the 36th state to ratify the Equal Rights Amendment. In North Carolina, the General Assembly has introduced SB 85 and HB 102 to ratify the ERA, but they languish in the Rules Committee, who have not even held hearings. We request that the Craven County Board of Commissioners pass a resolution of support for the North Carolina ratification of the Equal Rights Amendment, because we believe that when the women of Craven County succeed, the county of Craven succeeds. Thank you.
Thank you. Have you presented that to the county clerk?
Last month, we did, yes.
Please present the new one, please.
Oh, okay. Where is she?
And we will take this under advisement, and she will research it for us. Thank you.
Should I do it now?
Yeah.
Sandy Wheeler?
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I too am here concerning the Equal Rights Amendment. We have come a long way, but there's still much work left to do. Even at the time of its passage, the Nineteenth Amendment left out many women of color, and today, there are still many areas in which women are not truly treated equal. On average, full-time working women are still earning less than their male counterparts, and that gap is even wider when race and ethnicity is taken into account. Too many women face barriers while trying to access reproductive rights and health care. Just last month, congressional leaders pushed for an Obamacare repeal. That bill would have slashed Medicaid and defunded Planned Parenthood, making it significantly more difficult and more costly for millions of women to access critically needed health care services. I trust that this body will act in a responsible manner and devote to codify its intent to support equality for women. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brenda McGee. Brenda McGee. There you are.
My name is Brenda McGee, and I live at 28 Kessel Ridge Road. And thank you all for letting us come and speak tonight. The first thing I want to speak to about the Equal Rights Amendment is the popularity of the amendment. It really seems that, at this point, most people do support it. I have here petitions with the names and addresses of 148 women from Craven County, which is really a small representation of the women that support it, but they're the ones that we had that.
Move that to the county.
Okay. So we'll do that. So that it's very popular. And a recent survey that was taken shows both the popularity of the amendment and the fact that most people think it already passed, which I find really interesting. When asked if they think the Constitution should guarantee equal rights for men and women, 91% of people nationally say yes. In your opinion, should male and female citizens, in another poll, have equal rights? They said 96% said yes. Should the Constitution make it clear that male and female citizens should have equal rights? 88% said yes. And do you think that the Constitution already says that? 72% said yes. So most people, I think, believe this passed, you know, many years ago, and don't realize that it's still an issue. So there is wide support in North Carolina for it, and we would really like for North Carolina to be one of the final two states that's needed for ratification. I think it would be a great thing for our state to do that. And I wanted to address briefly two groups that are affected by the lack of equality under the law that we don't often think about. We talk a lot about money and things like that. But women in the military, approximately 20% of their folks in the military now are women, and they have fought really hard for equal benefits in the military, for equal opportunities. And without a law like this, it could be taken away from them. And so that's, for the women in the military, it's an important law. Also, for incarcerated women. I did some research on incarcerated women, and the number of women in our prisons has gone up dramatically since 1980. We now have, in the United States, 35% of the incarcerated women in the entire world are in our country. Most women are incarcerated for crimes of property, and I think that ties in a lot with the poverty and the lack of economic opportunities for some of our women. The other thing that I thought was really interesting is that women who are incarcerated for crimes of violence usually have attacked men that they know, or men and their families. And there's a big issue with women who are being abused, who are defending themselves or who have a history of abuse and who are anticipating being attacked again. Men more often are viewed as attacking people in self-defense, whereas women, it's viewed very differently in our legal system. So I wanted to point out that two of the groups we don't often think about are incarcerated women and our military women. This law is, this amendment would be very important to them, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
All of this, I believe, though, actually, the petitions, I need to give those to another organization, if that's okay? Thank you.
Susan Wong?
Yes, Susan Wong, 1990, Acorn Drive. Thank you, fellas. Last month, we asked the Craven County Commissioners to support the ERA. This month, we are bringing you facts on why you should support a resolution calling for the ratification of the Equal Rights Amendment. These facts were taken from the IWP, which stands for the Institute of Women's Policy Research. Women are almost half of the workforce. They are the sole or co-bredwinners in half of American families with children. They receive more college and graduate degrees than men. Yet, on average, women continue to earn considerably less than the men. In 2015, female, full-time, year-round workers made only 80 cents for every dollar earned by men, a gender wage gap of 20%. Women, on average, earn less than men in nearly every single occupation for which there is significant earnings data for both men and women to calculate an earnings ratio. In middle-skilled occupations, workers in jobs mainly done by women earn only 66% of workers in jobs mainly done by men. IWPR's report on sex and race discrimination in the workplace shows that outright discrimination in pay, hiring, or promotions continues to be a significant feature of working life. IWPR tracks the gender wage gap over time in a series of fact sheets updated twice per year. According to our research, if changes continue at the same slow pace as it has done for the past 50 years, it will take 44 years, or until 2059, for women to finally reach pay parity. For women of color, the rate of change is even slower. Hispanic women will have to wait until 2248, and Black women will have to wait until 2124 for equal pay. Persistent pay inequalities can have far-reaching economic consequences. According to a recent regression analyst of federal data by the IWPR, equal pay would cut poverty among working women and their families by more than half, and add $513 billion to the national economy. Just this last fact alone should be enough reason to move the ERA forward. How many times have you heard complaints about the number of people on welfare? Tonight, when you go home, you have the opportunity to tell your wife, your daughter, your granddaughters that you are standing up for them. You have the power, as a commissioner, to make a difference in their lives. I hope this is as important to you as it is for them. Will your name be on the right side of history for the Equal Rights Amendment? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Barbara Harrison, please.
Good evening, Barbara Harrison, 85 Shoreline Drive, Riverbend, North Carolina. Thank you all for allowing us to speak tonight, and obviously, it's a very important issue for us, and we hope that you all take it very seriously, because it's very serious to us. It's an important, the resolution is important because this amendment's very important, because the only right granted to women specifically under the Constitution is the right to vote. The right to vote, and that is all. It was introduced almost 100 years ago, and it has taken a long, long time for it to, for people to recognize how important it is. Every Constitution written since the end of World War II includes a provision that men and women are citizens of equal stature. Ours does not. Every other Constitution that's been added. It's about time. The amendment is very simply three sentences long. It's not pages and pages of words that are meaningless. It simply says, "Section 1, equality of rights under the law shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sex. Section 2, the Congress shall have the power to enforce by appropriate legislation the provisions of this article. Section 3, this amendment shall take effect two years after the date of ratification." Very simple. "I am a member of the Democratic Women of North Carolina Executive Board, and on behalf of all women across the state, regardless of party affiliation, we humbly request that you vote for its passage, we would hope, this evening. We would like to include among the many other county boards in North Carolina who have already approved this resolution, so that we may present it to the North Carolina General Assembly in favor of ratification. Nevada recently ratified the ERA, becoming the 36th out of the 38 states needed to ratify this amendment. We would like to see a progressive North Carolina become the 37th." Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
Helen Robinson?
Thanks for allowing me this privilege. My name is Helen Robinson. I live at 1906 Cayenne Court here in New Bern. I'm here tonight on behalf of my granddaughters. And I'm also here on behalf of all the little girls and women in the United States that don't have a grandmother to stand up for them. In my opinion, gentlemen, it's past time for Americans to provide female citizens equal protection under the law. Some people have suggested that the Fourteenth Amendment passed in 1868 is all that women have ever needed. History doesn't back this up. After the Fourteenth Amendment was passed, it took more than another 50 years for women to be given even the right to vote. And as you know, that took another constitutional amendment. So the Fourteenth Amendment didn't work so well there at the beginning. As it stands today, the Constitution of the United States still does not explicitly protect women from discrimination, except for the right to vote. Other protections currently available through congressional actions could be rescinded in a heartbeat by a simple majority vote. And for me, that's a scary thing. Some people assume that the battle for equal treatment for women under the law has long been settled in the U.S. Not so much. Though the U.S. has been key in providing, in encouraging Japan, and even Afghanistan to provide for equal treatment of women under the law, we still don't have that same level of provision in our own federal law. By the way, this is not some outlandish, crazy, left-wing scheme. Even the states of Tennessee and Texas have already voted to ratify the ERA. Even Tennessee and Texas. And as you heard earlier, over 90% of all Americans believe that the Constitution should explicitly defend the rights of women under law. It is now possible for our county to help correct this oversight. And it's also possible for the good state of North Carolina to become one of the last two states needed to vote for ratification. Some of you gentlemen serving on our county commission have daughters. Some of you have granddaughters. I beg you to think about the kind of future that you want for them. Let's work together to take the next steps to pass the ERA. Thank you for your time.
Ray Griffin?
Well, I hate to hear that, because these people fit right in my church, because all my men folks are him-think. They fit right in my church. Ray Griffin, it's vitally important that we know the truth, believe the truth, tell the truth, and lives must be controlled by truth and integrity. We must wrap our arms around the truth to seek freedom. Our nation was founded on its truth. We are free to choose as we wish, but we are not free to choose the consequences of this choice. It's time we grow up. We're in a crisis of monumental preparation. We cannot be a part of today's society and not be effective of what's going on. We should be a growing Christian. America's first line of defense has not been the military, but God himself. But we have politely told God, with the aid of the ACLU and other organizations, that we can handle these things ourselves. What a mess we've created. For example, states, we the For example, states, we, the people of the state of North Carolina, grateful to the Almighty God, the sovereign rule of nations, for the preservation of the American Union and the existence of our civil, political, and religious liberties, and acknowledge our dependence upon Him for the continuous of those blessings to our prosperity. Our nation today has been shaken to its very knees by the threat of war, drugs, violence, and men murdering men, and not only abortion, but killing brothers and sisters. When things are unsure and there is bad news all around, I'm glad to know that the sure word of God stands firm. We need to trust in God. We've tried everything else. We've passed gun laws, had to stop the killing. We've passed drug laws, but it has to stop the overdosing. We've passed drinking and driving laws, but it has to stop the one from getting that 10:00 a.m. high on Sunday mornings in the streets and killing himself or someone else. A wealthy gentleman one day came out of a store, reached down and picked up a couple pennies off the ground. Someone looked at him and said, "Why are you picking up those pennies?" He said, "I don't need the pennies, but it's the message on the penny that I need. In God we trust." What I was asking now is, just over here, we cannot hardly see it. Put "In God we trust" or something in the front and move that plaque over here because we are in a crisis and we need God more than we ever have. It would not hurt if you guys would stand on the Word of God. Put "In God we trust" right here or put another plaque over here because they cannot see it. I've had a lot of people say, "We have 'In God we trust' here," and nobody even knows we got it. And it wouldn't hurt if you guys could stand up and say, "Hey, we trust in God." All of you profess Christians, as far as I know. The only worrying purpose of the world is to take you from God by squeezing you, molding you, conforming you to an ungullible and destructive lifestyle. That's what this world is saying. "In God we trust," I believe, will help each and every one of you. I believe that they will look at you and say, "Hey, we've got a Commissioner board that relies on God." They can see it every time you open it, they go on the Internet or wherever. The world's system is warped and has set forth a mindset of people without God in His Word. And I say, "Education without God makes man a clever devil." In Pennsylvania, they took down a Ten Commandments monument out of the school. The churches got together and printed 1,500 Ten Commandments and put them on cards and boards and put them all throughout the city. Now, that's what we need to do here. We need to print up some signs, put "In God we trust," put them all throughout the city. We need to change things and turn things around. Brother Sampson, all these can tell you about the prison system. I've been in there for 20-some years now. It's full every day. We help that one we can, and we tell them, "In God we trust." If they can see something in what we're doing, they can see "In God," and you, the ones that present this, you can help someone and change their life. And I'm saying, we need to, although saying, when it's all said and done, there's more said than done. We need to get up and do something as churches, as Board of Commissioners. We need to stand up, get prayed up, get fired up, and get ready to go up, and don't let up until God comes back. Amen.[798.51][798.51](applause)
Hal James.
I'm Hal James. I live at 305 Calico Drive in Craven County. Some citizens of Beaufort County invited Rayner and me to attend a meeting that they've arranged with the staff at the North Carolina Department of the State Treasurer. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss local debt and how it's handled. This is a citizen's inquiry. However, I was asked if I had any public comments from the Craven County Board of Commissioners that address local debt. The meeting is scheduled for September the 13th, so if you'd like for me to relay any comments from the board, please let me know what they are. The citizens group believes that non-voted debt is a legislative issue that needs to be revisited. I printed the analysis of debt for Craven County that's on the State Treasurer's website showing total general obligation bond debt and notes at $15,939,000. Enterprise debt at $3,280,126,000, and other installment purchase debt at $34,478,225,000. Total general obligation bond debt authorized and unissued at $50,408,225,000. If current figures differ significantly, I would like to know that before the meeting. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I made enough copies for each of you all and for the county commissioner. I think you'd like for me to give them to the clerk.
Clerk, please.
Mr. Chairman, there's, there are no additional individuals who have asked to speak to sit there.
We have a motion to go ahead and public.
Come on.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, have it. We're out of public. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, which will consist of the minutes of August 21st, subdivision for approval, tax releases and refunds, request to set public hearing for CDBG disaster recovery fund. I have a motion to approve.
Come on.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a few questions. It doesn't really say in here. Where does this money come from? Is this state money? Is this money coming from the state government?
CDBG money?
Yeah.
Don, do you have a?
It's federal money that came to the state of North Carolina, and they're making it available to the people that were affected by hurricane damage.
Okay. So if you, I guess if you have a comment or questions, you should contact Congressman Jones.
Mr. Chairman? Yes.
If we don't, if we don't accept this.
We're only holding that money. Send to us.
Aye, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Thank you. Airport matters. Andrew Shorter, Director.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
First, here was some good news about this time every year. We get our grants from the FAA. As most of you probably remember, we are entitled to anywhere from $1.1 to $1.3 million a year based on the number of deployments we have. That's the scorecard that the FAA uses, so they count the people going out. Of course, we generally have that many people coming in as well, but that's the figure that they use. But the good part about this year, our entitlement, we've almost doubled that. So this year, we're going to be accepting or would like to accept, have the paperwork for approval to accept $2.6 million and change on that. The different part of that this year is the grants are coming in two different lump sums. The first one, which we already have the grant paperwork for your acceptance and then ultimate approval signature, is for the planning portion of these projects we have this year. And that planning portion will be the second part of our airport master plan update that we're doing. It'll encompass the drawings and also the ATB survey for the airport, which will be good information going forward that we'll be able to put that into the GIS, so we'll have good positions for all the facilities on the airport. The second portion, the tricky part of this, is in a draft form mat. So I think the thing that we're trying to do here is to get the approval for it and then for you, Mr. Chairman, to be able to sign it when it comes in. Because this has to be returned, this first one has to be returned by the 7th of this month, is why we're getting it signed tonight. But then the one that's in the draft form, that we should be in receipt of the smooth copy here in the next week or so, has to be returned to the FAA by September 15th in order for that to be good. So let me just go over the figures here so we know exactly what we're talking about. The first grant, which we have the, all the appropriate paperwork for tonight, is for And again, that's for the second part of the airport master plan update. The next grant that we don't have the smooth paperwork for yet is for $2,308,797. And that, those three projects under that include the runway obstruction removal, and that's on airport property trees, basically. It's a safety issue with aircraft flying over the trees. And then the next part is the taxiway EMB payment rehab and drainage improvement. So we have two taxiways on the airport right now that are in need of pavement rehabilitation in order to maintain the quality that the FAA prefers to have on airports. Airports, we can't afford to have potholes, as you might imagine, in our pavement surfaces. And then the last part of that is for perimeter security fence relocation for $189,000 of that. This fence is right now in the, it's called a runway safety area. It's been there for about 13 years, but the FAA has finally decided that we need to go ahead and move that out of the runway safety area, so they've provided the money to do that. So once again, half of that total is entitlement that the airport gets based off its deployments. And then the other half, which is the good news, is discretionary money that's been afforded us to do some of these other projects. So, you know, coming from my military training, success breeds unsuccess. We had some good luck with state funding earlier this year with some grants, and now we're, on our federal side, we're having these grants as well, which will total about $8 million in the next 12 to 16, 18 months. That amount is almost double to what we had in the 10 years preceding total. So, once again, this airport master plan, we're getting a lot of good data out of that. We're able to use that for our story, moving forward with FAA and then both on the State Division of Aviation side as well. So I'll take any questions.
I have, I have a question.
Okay.
Are these funds coming from the federal government and the state government?
These right, tonight, sir, are from the federal government.
I have a question, Chair. Their funds, are they going to help the extended parking lot for the rental cars? Is that part of the project?
That's something that we're looking at in the master plan. The portion of this is to draw those, but we haven't had any, we haven't gotten to the, what we call the, analysis of alternatives for that plan. But that is one thing that we are looking at in that airport master plan, is the limitation of the parking, the ready-return parking for the rental cars.
Right. Because I've been having complaints myself that, go rent a car, people can't even park.
Yes, sir. And, and, and not to let the cat out of the bag, because this is the main thing that we're looking at in the master plan update, but it's flip-flopping the employee parking lot side with the rental car parking side. It's about double the size on the employee side, and then we'll use the, what used to be the rental car side for some employee parking and potentially a new firefighting safety building in that location. That's probably a couple more years down the road. We need to finish this master plan update. You know, we'll have a open house on that, get the public's input on that, and then move forward in the next few years.
Okay, thank you.
Let's, let's take a motion on the first authorized acceptance of the first grant.
Mr. Chairman?
No, sorry.
And now discussion.
Commissioner Dacey, did you have a question?
No, no, I.
Okay. This, this first grant is coming from the FAA, and it's all federal grant money coming to the airport for the project that you've got mentioned in here.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so, the money from the FAA comes from where? For this grant, does it come?
The Airport and Airways Trust Fund.
Okay. Does that, and most of the funds in there come from actually ticket sales or would it be from?
It's a combination of those, fuel taxes and some of those taxes that you, you do get from tickets. And, of course, Congress authorizes that budget every year, which, of course, we're coming up on this FAA reauthorization right now. But once again, the piece we get is part entitlement and discretionary out of that fund. And we also, that requires a 10% match from local match, and the airport being a commercial entity that we run, we have our own funds, and we make that match.
Okay. But it's federal funds, the county's not supporting this part of this, this, this grant right here, and it's coming from Congress. Congressman Jones, as I represent, if we have further questions, we can call his office.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion?
No, no. Okay. So this, not any of this money is coming from the county?
No, sir.
Well, Mr. Shorter, it's, there, it's, it's not as though that there, I think what you said was that there is a 10% match that does have to come out of the airport itself, but that comes out of either our parking fees that are generated or the fees that are generated from any of the other activities that we've got that go on inside the airport that are, that reside in the county. So there is a small part of, part of local money, but those are all things that are generated by the services provided at the airport itself.
What I'm saying is, this is, this is a part of the county money because the county owns the airport.
Yes, sir. Long way around.
We have a second? We have a motion? A motion, a second?
I think I've already said.
Yeah. Okay. So we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Now let's go on to the second.
Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of the second authorization to accept the grant and sign the agreement when received. However, I'd like to make certain that the attorney has reviewed that agreement because, of course, we have it just in draft form today. I don't have a problem with you signing off on it, obviously, but I would like to make certain the council has reviewed it.
Commissioner Dacey, I definitely will. I'd like to sign also with you.
Okay.
We have a motion. I have a second on this.
Second. Please, second.
Any more discussion?
Again, Mr. Chairman, I hate to be redundant, but I just want everybody to be clear in the audience that this is money coming from the federal government via the FAA.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That this county does not fund any of that grant. This part is not a matching, matching grant either, correct?
Yes, sir, it is.
It is a matching.
Yes, sir.
But that fund comes out of your ticket sales or your other money generated at the airport?
The Airport and Airway Trust Fund funds the part of the federal, 90% of it.
Right.
The 10% that we have comes out of the airport annual revenue stream that we have at the airport, like Commissioner Dacey said, the parking lot, the landing fees, and those kinds of things. The airport is self-sufficient and runs based on its own budget. We get great support from the county with IT and HR help and some other administrative items, but we earn every dollar that we spend on the airport.
I'm sure of that, but I also say that a, well, part of that money is coming from the county.
Mr. Chairman, if I can follow up with that. Andy's doing a great job at the airport. In my business, it's important, in everybody's business, it's very important that we have a strong and viable airport. We're fortunate to be a small community, and yet we have a big league airport, and I appreciate everybody's hard work to keep it that way.
Thank you, sir. If I could just remind the, the audience and the commissioners, in 2016, the airport had $179 million economic impact to the area. That's direct, indirect, and induced. 3.3 million of that was directly back to local and state tax receipts. So it certainly pays to have an airport. There's only 10 commercial service airports in the state. As we heard earlier, there's 100 counties. So we are, I like to say, we, we punch above our weight level to some degree with that.
I'm a real, we have a nice airport.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, yes, thank you. And Mr. Shorter, as he pointed out, we are accepting additional monies here. This will, by, by accepting these funds, it will increase the size of our budget by about $1 million and a half over what we had anticipated at the beginning of this year. So there will be an adjustment. It will certainly suggest that the size of government has grown, but in fact, what is happening here is that Mr. Shorter and his team through, and I have to admit that we've made some changes on the consultancy side over the last couple of years, and I think that that's had a dramatic change in the way in which this airport has been able to situate itself on these grant requests, and, and your addition to the, to the overall program has been a tremendous help as well. So, you know, when, when, when people see that the size of our government is growing, it is often because of these successful measures in place as the reason for that. It's not as though that we're adding lots and lots of new people, but what we're doing is perfecting those assets that we have here in Craven County to the degree that we can. We've hired professionals to do exactly what they're doing in this instance. And so, yes, you will see an increase in the size of government by virtue of the budget expanding, but it is not without having substantial benefit to our community overall. So I want to thank Mr. Shorter for his leadership in this, and, and I'm just proud to be able to serve on that board.
And I'd like to thank Mr. Shorter for the work he's done here for this. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, gentlemen.
Next on the agenda is appointments pending current upcoming, current to be effective immediately unless otherwise specified. Adult Home Advisory Committee. We had a problem with this committee in that we had a number of members who resigned due to, we have one facility that has a bed bug problem, and they refused to go into that There had been said that there were other facilities, those were isolated cases. I attended a meeting with the members of this committee on Tuesday, a week ago, and Angela Pridgen spoke to them at the meeting, and as a summary of our meeting, we discussed the future of Craven County Adult Care, CAC, as well as the partnership of the Ombudsman Program and DSS. It was agreed upon by Tanya Davis, Adult Home Specialist Supervisor, and the new Adult Home Specialist for Craven, DSS, will provide an in-service training on their role and responsibilities in monitoring adult care homes. The training will serve as a quarterly meeting, and will be held on September 11th at 9:00 a.m. in the third floor conference room of ECC. CAC members are asked to email me any specific questions that we would like DSS to address. I will compile the questions and send them to Tanya Davis with specific questions that we would like DSS to address. I will compile them. What has happened here is, out of the members that resigned, three are returning because of this meeting, and one more is considering return. So that will bring us back up to about six people. But I just want to let everybody know that the unit that, where the bed bugs were found is being handled by DSS and the state. It's being taken care of, and any of the other areas were isolated instances, which I was assured of, so that at this point, the people that were members on that committee understand everything that they were told by the ECC people, and they are willing to come back based on those facts, that they will not have to go to that other facility anymore. So I think that was, that, by the way, that meeting was arranged through Vice Chairman Dacey and the Director of ECC, and a telephone conversation with myself, and then I attending this meeting. So I think it was a success, as far as I'm concerned, with the Adult Care Committee.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask a question?
Yes.
If they officially resigned, it would be of my opinion, and I'm not an attorney, but that they would need to resubmit an application and come back for the board.
Yeah, they understand that. Mr. Chairman, I would like to commend you and Commissioner Dacey on taking the lead on this very important board that was falling apart. I mean, everybody on the board, I believe, had resigned, and I appreciate you going above and beyond and putting the necessary experts together to pull that back together, because that's a very critical role that that board plays in this county, for senior citizens. It sure is. But it's vulnerable people in the county. Thank you very much. Thank you. And I'm sure Vice Chairman Dacey would say.
I really didn't do that much.
He did. He helped me. But I think that it's important that we recruit people to this committee. These people are in the adult care homes, they enjoy these visits, it helps the state run these so that there is no problem with any of the citizens that are living in these adult care homes. And I think that it's an opportunity for anybody to get a certain amount of self-satisfaction of helping somebody else out.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to say I'm thankful that this issue did come up, because I had been talking about where these homes ran in this county, and how the senior citizens, how a lot of them be suffering in these homes. Sometimes it could be because of lack of staff, cutting back, and I find this happens quite a bit when you cut back. I've been out to the home after 1:00, and some of their patients were not still out of bed because they hadn't been changed. So this gave me an idea that they didn't have enough help around there, or somebody wasn't doing the job. But most time, when I go there, it look like people's busy. And I think we should encourage our citizens and other people, even the families of these people, to go to see their mothers and fathers, or cousins, or whoever they are, to make sure that they get the right type of treatment. I go out there quite often, and it seems like a lot of these people is not getting the right care. I can go and see some people still in the bed, I see some people even in the wheelchairs and about to fall out of the wheelchair. So I like to encourage the public to really go out, even if they're not your mother, father, or not even in your family, go out and necessarily check on these people sometime. And they glad to see anybody, because there's so few people go out there and visit them. And I think we need, they deserve a nice place to go in their old age. And I always say, I might be out there one day, maybe I might be old enough to go to Rettmore, but I'm hoping that somebody will come see me.
I'll go, please, John.
Thank you.
You might be written.
That's right. That is so true.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clear something up, there is an adult care home, and there's also nursing home division, so there's two separate committees. Havlock Planning Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'm still working on it. I just forgot anybody that wants to serve.
Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, I see we have a candidate here, Eileen Levy, is that? Anybody responsible for this application? No? On the juvenile prevention. Well, I would appoint this person to that committee. So we'll appoint Eileen. Craven County Alliance Board of Directors. Oh wait, before we go, I got one more. New Bern Planning and Zoning Board. I have called a number of people on this, in fact, I've called about 16 people. I thought I had somebody, but it turned out they weren't living in that area. Do you think I can get away with another two weeks to work on this?
You could try. Oh, I'm sorry. Who are you guys? You could try.
I can try, okay.
Your 90 days is tonight.
I'll try then, thank you. Craven County Hundred Alliance Board of Directors. We have an application on file.
He was resigned.
We don't, Mr. Chairman, but I've been informed that there is one that they're working on to present to you as a recommendation, but I have not received it.
Okay, so as soon as we receive it, they'll let us know. Okay, thank you. And next would be the Craven County Community Child Protective Team.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move the nomination of Missy Blackerby.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, is there two seats here, or is there just one?
I think it's just one.
Just one, I believe.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Susan Houson.
Okay. All right, I think we have to take a vote on this.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like the members to recognize that Missy Blackerby has had a substantial career in working in this area of the law. She has been a guardian ad litem for many years, has dedicated her life to making certain that the needs of children and their welfare are being well taken care of, and I think this would be a perfect fit for her and her background.
Commissioner Jones.
Susan Houson.
Commissioner Liner.
Missy.
Commissioner McCabe.
Susan.
Commissioner Sampson.
Susan.
Commissioner Tyson.
Ms. Blackerby.
Vice Chairman Dacey.
Ms. Blackerby.
Chairman Mark.
Ms. Blackerby.
Yes, I've got four for Ms. Blackerby.
Volunteer Board of Judiciary Commission. Didn't we have, did we have something on that?
Yes, I left a letter there from the Clerk of Court that came this morning.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Mr. James Hughes.
James Hughes. Okay, other ones? Appointed by acclamation. Nursing Home Advisory Committee, Linda Lilli, appointed in 2011. I would reappoint Linda Lilli. Any others? Linda Lilli by acclamation. Agriculture Advisory Committee, Larry Paul, appointed in 2014.
Mr. Chairman, I ask that Mr. Paul be reappointed.
Okay, reappointed by acclamation. Upcoming appointments for October are the Clean Sweep Committee, John Campbell, Pat Sager, and then a senior resigned. We have a request. County Attorneys Report.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Two matters for you tonight. The first is, we've received an initial offer for the property located at 1114 William Street, which we jointly own with the City of New Bern through a tax foreclosure. The offer is an amount of $1,500. Would the board decide to sell that property? We'll go outside for upset bids, be advertised accordingly, and we'll come back to you after that process is complete. Depending upon the outcome, though, of the upset bid process, the county would receive approximately $1,300 of that $1,500, and it's for you, for your consideration.
Okay. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The second matter involves the demolition of structures located at 606 White Street in the City of New Bern. This is property that is currently owned by the city and county together. The county's ownership interest is approximately 70% to 75% based upon the amount of taxes that were due at foreclosure. The city is going to move forward with a condemnation and demolish the buildings on the structure. Estimated the cost, about $14,000. The city has done this before and has historically asked if the county would like to share in the cost pro rata of that demolition, or just simply transfer its ownership interest to the City of New Bern. And considering the tax value is $4,000, and our cost would be about $11,000 for the demolition, normally the board has agreed to donate its interest to the City of New Bern, so it'll be responsible for the entire cost.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
City can have it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
County Managers Report.
Hope you guys are doing great tonight. Had a couple things I wanted to share with you. First of all, there's some flyers here tonight about our Connect with Craven event on October the 10th, from 4:00 to 7:30 p.m. at the New Bern Riverfront Convention Center. This is a, oh, excuse me, a preview of sort of what we're looking to do. We're going to have a really neat event there. We're going to have the whole convention center filled up with different county departments and affiliates, and we're going to be telling the public about what we do. So we're excited about that. Dennis, we do have a website, link to cravencounty.com. And let's see if Dennis can get to it. It's there under what's new. As of now, it has our flyer. Additional information will be coming, about different informational sessions, we're going to have different topics that'll be there. The Clerk of Court's going to do a section on what that office does, register deeds, and then we're going to do our Craven County 101 class that we like to talk about. So just want to make you aware of that. Check back to that website periodically, and there'll be new updates. All right, more importantly here, Dennis, if we can get to this. I woke up this morning and immediately got about three more gray hairs talking about hurricanes. You know, it's hard to predict these things so far out. We certainly are mindful that we have to be prepared as now as a county. We encourage the public to do that. I wanted to, just for the folks to hear and the people that may watch on TV, to point out a couple websites that I personally use and I think are great. One is ready.gov. This is the FEMA website. This has a lot of information, Dennis, if you could scroll down a little bit, about planning ahead for disasters, how you talk about it, what things you need to do with your family. Dennis, if you'll click on hurricanes, please. And there's all types of different, scroll on down. If you'll go to, keep going. Basic preparedness tips. This is the most important part. When you're talking with your family, know about where you need to go. Most people in Craven County, because this is in our first rodeo, as we like to say, know about what their property looks like in different types of tropical weather type events. We've had everything in my tenure here from Hurricane Irene to Hurricane Matthew and various other tropical storms. If you're in one of those areas where your property may flood, you may be in an uncomfortable situation with the, from the river surge, you need to have plans and plans for somewhere to go. Certainly, that's something you can do now. Second, we really encourage a go-bag. This is a disaster supply kit. Very important things in there are flashlights, batteries, cash, first aid supplies, any medications that you might need that aren't readily available, and critical information that you may not be able to replicate. Those are things that are important there. And we want to, Dennis, if you can go to the Code Red, because I'm going to just skip something here. This is on the county's website. This is the way that we can mass communicate with the public about things that we're seeing here in Craven County, and very vital messages that we pass out during events. And if you look down there, there's a little link, it says, click here to sign up for Code Red. Dennis, if you'll click on that, it's there. Wow, you're way ahead of me. And it's some basic information. You create a count, and then you put in your phone number and your address and your name. And I'll give you a real-life experience with this. During Hurricane Matthew, we can take a computer screen that has an aerial photograph of areas of Craven County, and we can highlight an area and put a message, record a message on the phone, and it will automatically call every number on that list. So during Hurricane Matthew, as we saw the conditions changing due to the amount of rain that happened west of here, we were able to identify those folks and go ahead and pass that message out instantaneously. Because we do have folks who didn't have access to phones at that time, we did go door-to-door, and that's something we won't have to do here. If you can go back to the ready.gov site, Dennis. And certainly, the most important thing, make a family emergency communication plan. Have a way to get in touch with your loved ones if something should happen. And certainly, folks may not live here, and maybe folks who live in other parts of the state may be worried about you. That's a very important thing. All right, Dennis, if you'll go to readync.org, that's the FEMA website. Readync.org is the state emergency management website. There's a lot of good information here. I'll put a plug in for them. They have created an app, and it's right there. Get the app, and see, it has some really up-to-date information, as they're posting things from their emergency operations center in Raleigh, road closures, dam statuses, flooding issues. There's all kinds of great information there. I have it on my phone. It can even send you alerts if you plug the county in where you live, or send you a specific message of that, or regionally for more. And then finally, Dennis, if you'll go back to the county website. I just, just go back to the main page, just to make the commissioners aware, as we're dealing with the type of event, everything's going to change in about two weeks, because we'll completely do our page. But for right now... But for right now, as we think, that where it says the Craven County Board of Commissioners may be held Tuesday, we put the most up-to-date information right on the main page for things that are going on in Craven County and things that we need to get out to the citizens. So we have the code red, we have our county website, and we're doing our press releases in the media. So I just, I want to make the board aware that as a county staff, we're beginning to take a look at these things. We're constantly updating our plans. A couple of weeks ago, Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Mark and some of the staff went up to Kinston and talked about some long-term recovery from Hurricane Matthew, which certainly was promising. I hate to steal anybody's thunder, but I was really pleased that Director Sprayberry from North County Emergency Management indicated to us that we'll be receiving a flood gauge. And that's something that we had advocated very hard for in Craven County because certainly the flood gauge in Kinston is only good for, for things in Kinston. And things that happen in Craven County happen in Craven County. So as Stanley likes to say, the newest river doesn't end in Kinston. And we were sort of somewhat blindly going into certain things during Hurricane Matthew that will certainly be helped with that. So we want to thank the state for that. Other than that, we're looking forward to being out September 11th with Commissioner Jones. And on September 22nd, Commissioner, dealing with opioid awareness. So Commissioners, have any questions about hurricane preparedness or anything, I'd be pleased to answer them.
I'd like to thank you and the staff. That gauge has been asked for for years, and it's going to be a critical point. We could have definitely helped a lot of people understand better what's going on. So I commend you and the chair.
Well, you can commend this man because I gave him the lead to go.
It was a big issue last year with Matthew.
We just, we certainly just kind of with a squeaky wheel there about that, so. But it's an important thing. We just got to make sure it's located in a great place so we can get good data from.
Well, I think you also should mention that Craven County was recognized for the work that we have done in our creeks in snagging and helping reduce the amount of flooding that went on in the county during Matthew.
I would say, sir, and I want to give the credit to our planning folks, our soil and water conservation folks, they have created a model program for the state of North Carolina. We have had other counties come visit us, call us, learn how we did it. And I think as we go to these meetings, we're starting to see that feedback from local officials. It makes you feel good that we did something right, so.
I agree. Any other questions?
Your hurricane kits ready? Thank you.
Commissioners Reports. Mr. Tyson.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I would like to report that despite what some in this county say, the sky is not falling down. Craven County is in great financial shape. It's evidenced by the highest qualified opinion that we get every year since I've been on this board from an auditor. And it's also not just my opinion, it's the, it's proved in the tax rate that you pay right here in Craven County. And nobody likes to pay taxes. Nobody likes to do that, but you got to do it. If you're going to have schools, if you're going to have roads, if you're going to have airports, somebody's got to fund the taxes. But I am proud of this board for being so fiscally responsible, and it shows up when you get your tax bills, and they're among the lowest in the state. The only ones that are lower in the state of North Carolina are your beach counties, some of your mountain counties that have low population and a lot of property values and a lot of tourism, a lot more than we do. So we're, I appreciate the board for, for being fiscally responsible. And someone mentioned earlier about the debt that the county had. Mentioned 15,000 in enterprise debt. I believe that was, 15 million, I'm sorry, thousands, millions, billions, trillions. But if you remember, then we had to go into debt to build a new water plant because the state of North Carolina said you had to pull out of the aqua for you or anything. And I believe that that was a state government decision. Our representatives, Mike Spashali, Norm Sanderson, the local representatives, if anybody questioned that decision, they should have called them. Otherwise, we just do it because we're told to do it. We're subservient to the state of North Carolina. And as a result, we have to do what they mandate us to do. So we build a new water plant, and guess what? Your water rates in, in Craven County are among the lowest in the state. If you don't have many children in the house, your water bill is probably 15 to $20 a month. People in Raleigh and other areas would die for that. And we're doing that despite having to spend, just spending $35 million on a new water plant. It's because this county is fiscally responsible. And it shows up in your tax rate and your water rates and other things that you pay locally, sales tax or anything else. So, Mr. Chairman, I just want the record to be clear that the sky is not falling, and that's my commitment to the board. Thank you.
They're happy they don't have New Bern water.
Or have lot. Yeah, I'll pay, you know, I'll pay this rate.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. County manager mentioned it, but this coming Monday, September 11th at 6:30 at the Coe City Fire Department, we will be having one of our district meetings. I'm joined with the town of Coe City to host this. Sheriff Minette will be there, District Attorney Scott Thomas. Scott Harrelson from the Craven County Health Department also be there, and Dr. Megan Doe, along with our county staff who will come and, and discuss as time allows. On our minds, and we have conversation a lot around this county and across this nation about the epidemic that we have with heroin and opioids. And so it will be a discussion that will be discussed that night. We will allow the citizens to interact some, and so we're going to try, Commissioner McCabe to have some hot dogs like y'all had down in Harlem, I think, so we can feed our folks too on our end of the county.
That's good.
So hopefully we'll have, won't have any trouble with the hurricane, and we'll have a good response from that. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Liner.
Mr. Chairman, yes, sir. Ladies, I'm going to probably upset you, but I can't sit here and not say anything. After this meeting, I'd like to talk to the young lady that made a comment on the military, 20% of the women, or 20% of the women in the military fall into this category. The military women are as protected as the men are. They are better protected than anybody on the outside. They receive the same pay, they receive the same promotion, they receive the same health benefits and everything associated that the man does. So I'm not trying to sound rough, but I spent 30 years in there. When I got in there, we had less than 2.5% women. Now you brought it up there, we're almost, I think, 16, maybe 20% women. The military has been the forefront for protecting the women's rights and moving them forward. There's a long ways to go on the outside. I'm not arguing that point. But for me to sit up here and hear that, like I say, I'm going to stay after a person can come talk to me to show me those figures because I've got to defend the military. And if somebody's saying that, then I've got to make sure the word gets out because that's not right. The women in the military are equal to men. Now Congress dictates what jobs they got, what fields they're open to. That has nothing to do with the military. That comes from the civilian leadership. But everything else, they're equal.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes, I have a couple of things there. I did have a chance to attend the, the Terry Branch Farrah Terminal last Thursday morning. They had a lot of distributed gas, had a ribbit cutting, food, and it is a very, very nice facility on, on Farrah Road where I live at. So I encourage anyone that, not to go down there and visit the terminal and see what's going on. It's a long ways, it's the end of the day, it's Carter County. If I can come here, you can go there. Take a chance and just take a ride, you know, a nice sunny day, ride through the hollow area and, and see what's going on. Take a chance and take the Farrah across to Pamlico County and come back. You know, it's, it's a nice view. You see the birds coming over you, but it's nice. Don't go, it's rough or very foggy, but other than that, take a chance and, and take a ride, and I might see you go by and just wave at you. Okay? And another thing here, this storm out here in Harvey Storm in Texas had, had tremendous hard thing on, on the people there. And we are tremendously blessed in North Carolina and Craven County. We have to stop hating one another, talking about one another, and try to pray to God and put God at first. And don't worry about a whole lot of material things because you pass, the nuts have gone with you. I don't care if you're a millionaire, the most beautiful man in the world, woman, you're still going to go through the same gate I'm going through. The poorest man and the richest man got to go the same way. It don't matter. So we need to honor ourselves and do good to ourselves and respect our fellow men and our women and our senior citizens. Look up to them. And now you've got another storm, Armel, 185 miles an hour wind almost. It just might hit North Carolina, New Bern. If it New Bern, y'all going to start crying. I wish I had did this, I wish I done that, but then it's too late. Pray now while you have a chance and pray to God because he's number one in your life. And also, had a chance to go to the Rams football game of the night, and it was a pretty good game, and it started raining at halftime, and they told everybody to leave because it started lighting. And I thought game was over. So I went home, come back, they had finished the game, and we lost. I think the reason, one of the reasons why we lost because one of my colleagues didn't show up, tell me he wasn't going to come. That's George Lanna. See, he wasn't going to make it. So if George Lanna had made it, we would have won that third game. But George, I don't know what to say about you. But maybe next time we'll win, but hopefully we won't lose one the whole year. And I can say, y'all, start praying, praying for one another. Doesn't matter what you got, you already ain't got nothing but your heart. All you got is heart. That shirt you got on, that tie ain't yours. You don't want nothing. So take heed and start praying to God and yourself and try to treat people right, no matter what you got. Thank you, amen.
Commissioner Sampson.
I'd like to say we're still having problems in our different communities, all of us have about, and different families. I mean, most of us have about the same problem with drugs. We're talking about different kinds of drugs, but drugs are drugs. And they're, they're really destroying our country. And working together, I'm so sure that we can solve this problem that we have. But we got to work together. I can imagine that it's in just about every family in this country or in any other country. It's not just my problem, my family's problem, it's all our problem. I think this reentry is a foundation that, that we can work on and make things better, give people a lot more opportunity to, to be able to get a decent job and also to take care of their families and be able to get them a good education so they can make good money, have a good living in this society rather than running from place to place selling drugs. I tell people all the time, it's, it's harder looking for a job than going to work on a job. Because I've been out there unemployed, and I know how hard it is running from place to place trying to find a job. And I had, I had some experience, I had, I would say I had the best of experience looking for a job and being qualified for a job. But I had some experience being qualified for a job, but that's hard to come by. But working together, we can make this reentry best for everyone who want to do better. And I believe, I believe within myself that at least 90% of our citizens want to do better. I'll be always going to have a few that don't want to do better. But I say 90%, we would want to do better if they had a chance. With this reentry, we have, most of the citizens in the different organizations in Craven County have decided that they want to work together to make this happen. Entirely getting the city and, and the county, the community colleges, all the different type of organizations in the county, working together to help people because if we don't help them, we're going to have to pay for them. So if we help them, then they can pay some taxes. And I believe this is going to be one of the biggest organizations in any county, in the 100 counties, because we had a lot of people that's been working together to make this happen. I heard people saying, uh, Cleveland talking about their programs up there, but they were way, they were way behind us. And I know they got more money than we have up there, but they, they didn't have the expertise and then how working together that we have. So I'm, I'm just proud of that reentry program. And I'm looking for big things with that reentry program. And we got, have people talking to people, to let people know about this program that won't nobody have the opportunity to say they didn't know nothing about it. So it's going to be real appetite. Another thing, I see where our gas is easing up, whole thing's easing up, it's flying up. And that, I passed by a fuel station today, I blew, it was 238 a gallon. So that's been, it's going up, it's going up over a dollar in the last month. And they say we're going to start coming back down, but I haven't seen the prices come down yet, but we need some help on that gas. I know when I pulled up the fuel station, they had to pull $50 out there, and the gas tank don't get full, I knew it's hurting. So we're just hoping that we work together like we did before and keep talking about it, that the prices are beginning to come down, level off, that everybody be able to go to and from the grocery store to their jobs without hurting the grocery that's coming in the house for the kids and buying kids clothes. This summer is over and kids going out to school, got to buy school clothes. So we are hoping that it does come down and make it better for everyone. One more thing I would talk about the storm. Storm preparation. Now, without, I, I've seen some bad storms myself right here in Craven County. I have awakened in the morning time with water in the bedroom. And then I, everything was flowing in the house. So I had to walk out and walks to a higher level ground, had boats all up in the community picking people up. The water was so high over there in Dufford Field. Downtown, I remember they had their beer plant washed over, and they had beer flowing all over the city. People downtown, pickup truck picking up beer, beer out of the street. So it, it's tough when you have these storms. I know when I, they had the first storm in Louisiana, we had people to move here in Craven County, and, and didn't have nowhere else to go. And they, they couldn't pay the rent, and they didn't have no, couldn't buy the food. And my wife and I and the organization got together and contacted some businessmen, and I can name one right offhand who really gave quite a bit of money. Two, I can name two, there's two lawyers, Lawyer Stubbs and, and also Lawyer Kellam. I know they gave a big donation to help these people that were without help in our community. And I really appreciate it. I know more people than that gave, but I can just remember them right off, right offhand because they was in the lead. And so these people finally got a chance after, I believe it was about a year, I don't know, a year, year and a half before they were able to move back home. I imagine these people out now don't tell when they, when they'll move back home. But it's a bad, it's a bad feeling. At least, at least I probably, I was out probably when we had the storm in New Bern, I was probably out at my place maybe six months. And that, that wasn't so bad because I did have some other places I could go. But those people don't seem, seem like everybody in the community is in the same fix. They don't, nobody had nowhere to go, got put up in hotels and motels wherever they, wherever they can find one, they had transportation, family get misplaced. And I'm so proud of the people coming together in these places and make this assistance noticeable, that people can realize that it might be you next time. You don't never know when it's going to hit. And we're just keep praying, people keep getting closer and closer together. I think, I think Craven County has come closer together. And I'm hoping that we'll reach that point that we can feel each other care. All, everybody feel each other care, no matter what color you are, what nationality, where you come from, who you are. And when I see this, I hope I see it before I die. Because I believe it probably got about twenty-five more years here, so I'm hoping it happens in twenty-five years.
Hope it happens, too.
So we're just praying and hoping that we can continue to come together and not spread the point anymore. Thanks, that's all I have.
Vice Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Commissioner Sampson, you know, you talk about the love of our, that we have in our community, and you are absolutely correct. We've got a couple of things that have been going on here for a little while, unfortunate things that we're having to deal with, this opiate abuse. These deaths that we're seeing in our community are overwhelming. But on Thursday night of last week, the Craven County Hope Organization pulled together a candlelight vigil down at Union Point, and it was just a beautiful, touching evening. An opportunity for those families that have lost so much in our community to get together to reflect on one another's loss and how we can move forward together as a community. As many of you know, I lost my sister just a couple of years ago to an overdose. And, you know, these are tough times for these families that are going through lots and lots of pain. Now, none of us want to have to deal with that, but there are wonderful organizations. And this, this event that we're going to have here on the twenty-second is going to be an opportunity for all the folks within law enforcement, within the caregiver community, within government, to come together to really understand what sorts of things we have available to us, what families have available to them. I would encourage people to go onto my website at scottdaisy.com. And on that, I've taken the, the help sheet that is available that lists all the different agencies that we've got within our community that if you're in need, you have the opportunity to go to, to reach out for help, to get immediate support. And Commissioner Sampson, nobody is alone in this community. We've got great help. Another one of those opportunities is going to be on September sixteenth. The Vision Clinic is going to be held at Garber Church at forty-two oh-two Country Club Drive from eight AM until five PM on Saturday the sixteenth. Any individual that needs vision assistance is going to be able to show up. They're going to have a doctor that's going to be there, they're going to be able to see an individual with, with experience that can help them in getting them fixed up, not just with a diagnosis, but also with glasses if necessary. And I believe a lot of that is going to be free of charge. On August twenty-third, I was able to have a town hall meeting in River Ben. I think this one went exceptionally well. We actually had some people show up, which is somewhat of a change. But we had roomful. And one of the things I'd like to bring to the staff's attention is, you know, there's that Highway seventeen bypass and that thing runs about six miles long and there are no cut-throughs. So if there's an accident in one location of that, it really hampers the ability for folks to be able to turn around. And God forbid if there's an emergency, there's no way to get from one side of that road to the other. And I'm hopeful that maybe I can work with the staff to get something like that addressed. And then on the twenty-fourth, we had the Southeast Regional Partnership that met in Elizabeth Town. I've never been to Elizabeth Town before. It's about two hours, two and a half hours away from here. Nice little community. But we had the Southeast Regional Partnership that got together, and I'll just be brief here. But as it turns out, we are lacking in product availability. So I guess that that means that there aren't that many available buildings in eastern North Carolina for commercial use. Many of the current projects that are being talked about are in brownfields so that we don't have any finished buildings that are ready for industrial application. The most desirable projects will have rail and natural gas access to them. And I'm told that the best sizes are between forty thousand and seventy thousand square feet and then between one hundred thousand, excuse me, one hundred and twenty thousand and two hundred thousand square feet. Workforce issues remain a problem throughout eastern North Carolina. The number one issue seems to be the quality of the workforce. North Carolina is, its number one issue for prospective employers is quality of workforce. The Work Keys Program, which we developed here in Craven County a few years ago, I don't know if you've heard much about that lately, but it is valued and along with any other demonstrated workforce development program is seen as the chief development tool. We don't have people that make products. If, if you don't have people that make products, you don't have a business that's going to be willing to come. So you've got to have the ability that can actually, the folks that can make the products. Does the community college system really address the needs of tier-one and tier-two communities? And the answer appears to be that the training needs to begin in tenth and twelfth grades, not just at the community college level. High school kids need to have more skill options available to them. Evidently, Lenore County's Community College has recently started a manufacturing academy, including a drug and workforce program. It should be something that maybe we take a look at. High schools need to have STEM programs. Of course, we're doing that here in Craven County and we're going to be fortunate enough to have an expansion for the community college coming down, down at Havelock in not too long. And then, of course, communities need to head, need to demonstrate innovation in their area of workforce development. That is the number one attractor, attraction for employment is whether or not we can, we can have our workforce development programs demonstrate innovation. So I presented this information over to Timothy and hopefully he's going to be able to make some decent use of it. But that's my report for this evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. I, County Manager spoke about the News River Basin Roundtable. I thought that was an excellent meeting. It was four hours. Commissioner Jones was at it. I think we got a lot of information, but we also got a lot of reward from it. What surprised me was in order to get on the Army Engineers Corps to come down and do anything, it takes a year recommendation from one of our senators. And then to get the funding for it, it takes another three and a half years to get the funding at fifty percent. And then we've got to come up with the balance of that fund, which was a little bit shocking to say the least. But I thought it was a great meeting and it informed a lot of areas. I also will be attending a, as chairman of the Highway Seventy Commission, which is a five-member county organization. We have a meeting on the twenty-first of this month and we'll be discussing the Jame City area, the changes going down. Which is very important to us. So that is on the twenty-first. In addition to that, I received a note from Timothy Downs, the Director, Economic Director, that I'm invited to a special open house, but I'm sure this was for all commissioners to celebrate the kickoff of the new Entrepreneur Center of Craven County. The open house will be held September fifteenth at the beginning at five PM to two thirty-three Middle Street, three ten O'Mahlsville. As you know, a team has been working on the Entrepreneur Center of Craven County for a couple of years. The team is dedicated to creating, encouraging, and facilitating an entrepreneurial culture through collaboration with mentoring, education, networking, resources. Over the last two months, our entrepreneurs and supporters have been together with a renewed focus and have been working diligently to complete the final phase to bring innovative coworking space to Craven County. We're excited about this new space and look forward to sharing it. So if any of the commissioners would like to attend that, that's Friday on the fifteenth at five PM. The other thing I want to mention, as we talked, a couple of commissioners talked about the opioid forum that we will be holding. I think that at this point, Craven County has an epidemic of these heroin and these pills. And this forum, the purpose of this forum, is so that we don't have a crisis. And we're going to have a meeting that will be from eight-thirty in the morning till twelve-thirty. We've invited all of the elected officials in the municipalities, all of our social service and health department people, our law enforcement people, Sheriff's Department, New Bern, the SBLI people. I think a hundred and forty letters went out. Is that correct? So that hopefully we will have a start, a jumpstart on heading this epidemic off that in another year or two, we won't have a crisis like we've had in other counties. So I'm looking forward to that. And with that, I...
Mr. Chairman, I have one more thing. I forgot.
Is that what the call was all about?
Yes. Yes, that's what it's all about.
Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
What I intend to say was also, was that as I was looking at the television over in Texas, I thought about what we had done when we had the storm down Vanceboro. And I was so proud of our staff and our county manager, how they had it set up that people didn't have to go to different places to get the service they needed, but it would look like it was stopped and sharp. Anything we needed was in that building. You go to that second I building and you get all the information and you want to put in for FEMA, FEMA was there. All the organization that was needed was in that building. So I was really proud of Craven County, how they had it set up, that people were helping. They had a lot of volunteers down there, a lot of our staff volunteers and staff family volunteers. That's what it's all about, people working together. And if people work together, we can get anything done. Working the part, we can tie everything up. That's all I have.
Thank you. Do I have a motion or adjournment?
Sue move.
All afraid to say aye?
Aye.